833 Lake Road. Telecommunications Tower located at 833 Lake Road, at Blue Sky Towers. LLC, Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems, LLC, PDA, Verizon. Because the sketch plan review proposed 125-foot-tall communications tower with a four-foot lightning rod on a 62-by-2 acre parcel located in LL Large Lotsing Family Residential District under the code of town.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you for that intro. Good evening. My name is Ashley Champion. I'm attorney of the law for Mizzou Peabody in Rochester. I'm pinching tonight for my colleague Jared Lust, who's also working on this application. We're here tonight on the app of Blue Sky and Verizon Wireless. Joining us as part of the project team, we have Jackie Barlata, who is our real estate expert, and also Mike Crosby, who is our radio frequency engineer. They are here in the event that you have any specific questions regarding either of those aspects of the project that I can't answer. As was just briefly described, we're here tonight seeking, at this point, a sketch plan review with respect to our proposed telecommunications site to be located off Lake Road. You will see from the propagations that were included in the exhibit to the application that there are quite a few coverage issues in that area. It's been a target area for the company for quite some time. And so, we're really excited to be able to bring this site here to the town and close that coverage gap that the residents and folks driving down Lake Road experience. Just very generally, the site right now is used partially as an orchard. It will continue to be used as an orchard, less the project area. The tower is proposed at 125 feet, which within gives the minimum height necessary in order to meet our coverage needs. The process, as you know, the site is permitted in the town, in the district that it is proposed upon issuance of a special permit from your town board. That special permit process also includes a referral and recommendation to this board in addition to your own independent function with respect to site plan review. So, there's going to be a little bit of bouncing back and forth between boards. The application was before the town board at its meeting last week, at which time they referred the application here to this board to sort of kick off your site plan process. And we expect to have several meetings between the two boards in order to fully vet and review the application prior to proceeding. So, I know this is sort of the first, the kickoff meeting, but we're happy to answer any questions you all may have about the site specifically or the project generally.
Well, we can start anywhere, I suppose. I did watch the meeting last week, the town board meeting. There's obviously a lot of objection to the project in that location. That's that side of it. The other side of it, the reality of it, it is a dead spot. There's been a lot of complaints, you know, from people, but bad reception and so on and so forth. As a novice looking at it, I mean, we've done a lot of towers over the years, believe me. And by looking at the location of that, it's pushed all the way to the back of the property, of the private property, I should say.
Correct.
And I see out there, I've been back in that woods many times. There is a big drop-off. That's where it goes down into the, over towards the town parkland area. You can't go back any further. You can't hide it anymore. I see where you've gone and looked at other locations, the Kiwanis Club. You apparently surveyed that area.
Correct.
Parson Wayting Road, 317, 380 Wayting Road. And from reception wise, I think there's a tower south of you by Drum Road, I believe, in the back there. If you move here a spell, so if you go back any further, you're going to break down top of that tower. You're too far inland. I can understand that. Going east, there's Tower of Folks Road, I think. Is there another one?
Or Mount Creek to the east.
That's the other one?
Yeah.
Okay, there's one there. That's right, I forgot which one that was. But anyways, you've got them. In this area, it is that spot. So, can understand the reason that we're locating that. And I know there is a lot of controversy on it, mostly because we don't want it in our backyard, which has always been with every case. You can come up with all the reasons why not to give it in an area because of wildlife birds, signals, so on and so forth. Is that thunder?
Yeah.
Wow. Please not coming in on us here. But anyways, if I'm not mistaken, is there a law, this is something that's been bugging me a little bit, that you have a right to put a tower in a location where it's needed? State law?
Correct.
FCC law, I should say.
Correct.
Am I right?
Yes, that's correct. That's what is described in the exhibit.
I have that, yes.
Yes, which are the applicable legal standards.
Yes.
Basically, the way that the law works in New York State is that telecommunications companies are given the same discretion with respect to citing telecommunications sites as any other utility would. So, you know, RGND substation, treatment plant, we have water treatment and distribution facilities. The reason being that, like other utilities that are essential, and telecommunications services is now deemed essential in our modern world. They have to be cited in certain areas in order to work. Obviously, if the company could suffice with never putting one more dollar into infrastructure and never having to build another tower or putting up another antenna, that's of course what they would do. But they're not able to render the adequate service that's demanded of not only their FCC license, but their customers without increasing coverage and providing coverage in existing gaps. So, similar to other utilities where you need to be located next to sources or receptors, it's no different with telecom, that, you know, as much as an area that's far away that nobody ever frequents, that no one can ever see, feels like a better location, you're not going to be getting the coverage that's necessary in those types of spots. So, there is deference and discretion given under New York State law for citing of telecommunications facilities similar to other utilities, that if we can, as a company, show that there's a need, and you show that need by the gap in coverage, which we've displayed with our propagations, we see the big white spot along Lake Road where there is no coverage or there's very spotty coverage, and that we've done our diligence to show that within that search area, that area of need, that this is a reasonable location, which we believe it is based on the analysis that we've provided of the other available sites, that again, will serve this need, not just any other site in the town or in the neighboring town or somewhere else where folks may think that a tower is going to be less visible or more desirable. But if we can meet that burden, then yes, New York State law provides that we're then entitled to the site.
Can the FCC override, for example, if a community decides they don't want the tower? Can the FCC, does the FCC have the authority to supplement and change that? And say, yes, you do. You must build the tower at a certain location.
Yes. So, it's not the FCC per se that has that power. It would be the New York State courts that would say, based on the FCC's jurisdiction and based on the fact that you have met the legal burden that I just described. If a municipality were to say, the resident, you know, sorry telecom company, just they can say theoretically, sorry water company, sorry sewer company, sorry electric company, the residents don't want you here, that would not withstand in a legal challenge. If we met our legal burden to show that there's a need for the service and that this is an appropriate location. So, it wouldn't be the FCC that would interpret it. It would be New York State law, which has put into effect this relaxed zoning standard for public utilities, including telecommunications providers. That's, and as you know, New York State has certain areas that preempt or overarch for municipal control. And so, that would be not the FCC, but New York State.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I know there's folks here that are opposed to the project. This is just a sketch plan review. It is not a public hearing. I did watch the town board. I was a little disappointed the way the actions were going on in there. And I'll say it right out, that won't happen here tonight. If you want to speak, we won't give you an opportunity to speak. One person goes up and speaks, podium there. Please don't burst out. If that's going to happen, I'm going to ask you to leave the room. I'll tell you right now, this was very frustrating watching that meeting the other night. People interfering with other people speaking and so on. It's not acceptable. So, that said, if anyone does wish to comment on this, don't want to hear stories, war stories, and this and that. It's whether or not it is an acceptable use in the area. I see your saying, but... Want to bring up any comments? You're welcome to come up. Just give it, sure. Just give us your name and address.
Sure.
If you don't mind, I'll just wait.
Sure, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Andy O'Gart. Longtime resident, 820 Lake Road. So, I don't think this is really so much the so-called NIMBY thing. I don't think we want to stand in the way of progress. I think the issue at hand is the specific citing within the coverage area that Verizon's attempting to build. So, it's a large area, and I think Verizon, from my readings of their submission, did not necessarily do a lot of diligent pursuit of alternative sites. They cited the Kiwanis location, and it's not even clear really why they rejected it. It's just half a mile away from this proposed location. They mentioned the Wayting Road location. They said, well, we sent letters to the landlord or the owner of the property. Didn't get a response, so we dislocated it. So, I don't really see a lot of looking around at alternate sites. This is directly on Lake Road, which is a New York State's designated official scenic byway. If you look at the pictures of the tower, this thing is a giant. It stands two to three times higher than the tree line. It will stick out like a giant sore thumb on a New York State scenic byway. That's not a good thing. It really detracts from the entire purpose of the state legislation to protect and preserve the natural scenic beauty of that route. So, again, I submit Verizon needs to look around a little bit harder. We're not necessarily disputing that, hey, if they improve coverage in that area, it would be nice. Sure, okay, I accept that. I think it's a very big block of land, though, and I don't think they've really done any sort of proper diligence in seeking out alternate sites. I think the board, the town, and the planning board have to balance, balance the interests of everyone involved. Balance the desire for improved cell service and balance the potential degradation of the natural beauty of that route and of the area and the significant impact on all the property values in that area. We're talking a diminution of millions of dollars perhaps of property value because of this big, and I'm sorry, big, giant, ugly tower.
Do you have facts to that?
Excuse me?
Is that, do we have some information that shows that?
The diminution of property value?
Yeah.
I intend to get that. I just, per se, looking through, there's all sorts of studies that talk about it. It's a wide range, 10%, 20%. It really depends on the, just the garishness and the height of the tower and the property's proximity to the tower. But I do intend to gather that. I may even get some real estate experts to opine and offer an assessment of the detraction of value from such a tower. So, I would ask them, please, go back to the drawing boards, look at the, look a little closer. I think there are alternate sites that they can cite that will not be such, right on the main route, right on Lake Road, maybe a little further back, maybe a little down Wayting.
See, that's where the trouble comes in. That's what I was, I hear what you're saying.
Sure.
But further back, you know, further back, you just go back another quarter of a mile and you hit the Kiwanis. There's a tower right there, in that area, just below the tower. I mean, just beyond the Kiwanis.
Well, we're talking half a mile.
That's a long, from what I understand, that's a long range on a cell tower. They transmit a small radius. So, I think that's, this is just from past experience with other towers.
Well, this tower is meant, supposedly meant to cover from Baker Road over to Holt Road and a mile down south. So, I, it's cited pretty far north, in my opinion, and within that range.
See, ideally, it would be nice to set something like that. You know, we've done these before, in two or three towers, been in town. And there was one proposed, I'll just backtrack a little bit. It was proposed on Baker Road. It was right by the curb of the road, right by the Kiwanis. And if you were going south, you would see that tower right in front of you because it's right by the curb. If you were going north, same thing, you had the curb, that tower. So, we asked if it could be moved. They messed around and worked it over, worked it over, flew balloons and everything, ultimately located it back onto the Kiwanis property, you know, further back in the trees. It kind of hid it more, but it's still there, still sticks up. But do you see it? Not really. You've got to be looking for it, you know? And this here has pushed way back. Granted, there's no tree. I wish there were, but...
This tower, you're not going to miss it. You're going to see it.
I agree. I understand 100% what you're saying, and I agree with you. But there are no trees there. But you can't put it back any further. You're into the parkland. If you did go back, then what do you do? You've got to have access. You've got to put a road. You're going to put a road through all that. That's all wet land down in there. It's not a proper spot for it there either. You'd have to make a road going through the woods. So, this doesn't interfere with any ecology whatsoever. It's just a continuation from where the barn is back to that tower site. See, that's the way I'm seeing it, and I understand what you're saying.
Again, I, I don't think we're necessarily disputing that somewhere within that block, a tower can be cited. I think this is probably the worst, one of the worst possible choices. Again, right on the premier road of the town of Webster, Lake Road.
But it's not on the road. It's out front.
It's a quarter mile, not even. Less than a quarter mile.
Look, how far back from the road is it?
800 feet roughly, I think.
I don't...
800 or 900 feet approximately. It's less than a quarter mile.
It's as far back as you can get.
Which is pretty significant for our site.
What is it?
That's pretty significant.
No, absolutely.
For our site.
I guess I don't understand why they did supposedly explore the Kiwanis site, and I could not deduce the reason why that was severely rejected.
I'm going to guess, if they can respond, if they have the, my guess is that it's too close to the tower that's at Drum Road there, by the All-Stag. There's a tower right there.
I don't suppose they would have investigated it from the get-go had that been the case, though.
I don't know. Maybe they would have looked for a 200-foot tower.
Oh, yeah, sure we do. Same as the existing Crown Tower.
What's that?
Sure, we would investigate it even if it ends up being too close, just like we did with the existing Crown Tower. We hope that lots of, we hope to have lots of options within a search range, so we investigate.
If you're going to talk, you can talk to the microphone.
Yeah, we, actually, we can just do a summary rather than move back and forth.
All right. I guess we got the picture where you...
So, again, the Wayting Road, we sent two letters to the property owner, didn't get a response. Oh, done with that. So, again, that would be at the Wayting Road locations, where it would be, again, off, a little bit off of Lake Road, a little more in a sheltered area, or potentially other locations. I mean, this is labeled the Webster Park Tower. I don't know if there's any Webster Park locations that might also be suitable.
Okay. All right. Well, let's move on from that. I went there. Thank you. All right. Mr. Neal.
I have some more comments to add to...
I have to go up to the mic. I'd like to stay, not repeating everything, the same things over and over. And let's try and keep it down to five minutes, if possible, okay?
I live at 846 Lake Road. We are right across the street from it. Yes, we oppose it.
What's your name?
You would ask for...
Can we get your name, please?
Murray McCutcheon. That's us. You would ask if we had any documentation, and I had put together some, a letter with some exhibits that I would love to pass out to the board. I have copies for all of you to look into that goes into a little bit of our concerns, as well as touches base on the tower itself. 5G, I imagine that they're going to be coming out with 5G. There's also a lot of potential risks that are being, we believe, undervalued and understated and not being looked into that we're also concerned about. The risks of having a cell tower that close in our proximity.
I'm just going to interrupt you for a second.
Of EMR.
I did hear that comment earlier this week about the 5G signal, which did concern me a little bit. And I did call the people, the applicants, and asked, is this 5G? Or what, basically, no, we don't use 5G. It's the same as every other tower. It's 4G. So, it isn't 5G signal then?
4G, 5G can they guarantee us that these emissions over long term? And again, I want to refer you to the exhibits I do have in here. I'm just stating that EMR radiation emissions, they really do not know if it's harmful to people, animals, or whatever, wildlife. There's enough evidence through the years that suggests we may need to take a second look. We are concerned about that.
Just to take a second look at, at cell towers?
And at the type of resources and information that's out there that determines what kind of effect does long-term prolonged, close proximity have upon people, animals, and wildlife to EMR radiation emissions? So, again, you want this brief. I'm going to keep it brief tonight. I understand this is just a preliminary. The other concern, of course, is our area is considered an environmental protection overlay district, the parks, the conservation areas. So, we also don't want a tower there that may also affect the wildlife, our normal day-to-day, what we expect is people who are coming in, tourists, people who are using. It's just not something that we think is a viable site.
I think I see what you're saying.
May I?
Sure, absolutely. Just for the record, I think we have to get in the mic, back it. Yeah, that's good. I hear Josh Mike coming.
Again, we're just asking that perhaps we can hold off on this decision, and maybe we can find an alternate site that would be more appropriate than the one that you want to put at 833 Lake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else we should...?
Mr. Neal. I'm John Ernst, 1088 Road. I speak for the project primarily, I was born in West Webster four years ago, so I've been around this town for a long time. But currently, I carry six corner of expense, which I've kept going for a while. And the cell phone coverage where I am at 1088 is terrible. I carry a cell phone because I can use it when I get in with it. But half the time, at 1088, it doesn't work. Part of the time, it sends me to Canada. So, I think we leave this town. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We got a couple of comments from people in regard to this also. Here's, here's a, maybe they call. Room reception at our house is, at our house is a problem for me because my job will always be remote, and I have to rely on strong cell service. For this reason, I am not opposed to the project. I'd be interested in seeing any information the town has in regards to any health concerns as it relates to cell towers. Yes, I am not that informed about it. I'm fine with you sharing the email. And I received this one. I want to make you aware of my adamant support of the cell tower proposal across the street from my prior residence. He's moved to, just down the street from there a little bit. Sold my home to some new Webster residents, and I'm happy to say that I remain local. Excuse me? I remain local, I'm just a couple of doors down the street to my new location, and my only complaint is the cell coverage. As you may or may not know, the cell coverage in the areas surrounding both properties is spotty at best. As you know, a local resident in significant support of this beautiful community in Palm Springs. I've lived on Lake Road for more than a decade. Cell reception is laughable. I consistently have three to six dropped calls per day. I've had two emergencies occur in the past where I was not able to dial, to dial out due to lack of cell service. We literally get hit fees from Canada occasionally for international fees that they can, when they can. And the lack of data service with consistent internet is very important. Living in Webster, this is pretty remarkable. I can't think of a single reason the cell tower should not be approved by the planning committee immediately. I'm happy to jump out on the call, provide any further clarifications. That is it. We sign. So, these are people who are in support of it. That's our unit two, so there's two people that are. And, you know, I think there's a whole lot of people that are in favor of supporting it. But the issue, and I know what you're saying, and I think it all boils down, you both are talking the same thing, it's mostly aesthetics. It's there. If it wasn't visible, we'd be okay with it. If it was 10 feet high, we'd be okay. But because you can see it. And most of these towers, over all the years that have come into town, we've got several of them in Webster, they kind of meld into the situation after a while. You don't even see them anymore. And we've got several of them like that. And they're, this is no different than other ones that we've worked with, too, where people were dead against it, opposed it, fought it. You know, the reality is, everybody wants to use a cell phone.
Right. I think you hit right on the aesthetics. And I understand and appreciate, you know, the comments from, from the neighbors, and those are all comments we've heard before many times everywhere we go. So, it's not surprising. I think, though, you know, the comments about property values or concerns about wildlife or emissions, wherever a site is going to be located, those same comments, you know, come dry. So, I really think it does come down to that folks don't want to see it, right? Because moving it down the road in somebody else's neighborhood doesn't, doesn't change any of the other comments that were raised. I also want to make a point, which, which I don't think that I can overstate, in that the law is very clear that when considering telecommunications or other utility application, general community opposition of, you know, not wanting the project, not liking it, not wanting to see it, is not an appropriate basis of consideration. So, while we understand and respect that, you know, folks may not love the idea of looking at a tower, I think that, like with any utility infrastructure, you know, nobody loves telephone poles or wires or transmission lines or distribution lines, but it's just part of our reality. And like you said, Mr. Neal, they really do blend into the canvas more than, more than you think. You know, looking at that picture right now, it may seem a little scary. You know, you're willing to theoretically, I guess, if you pull over on the side of Lake Road, be staring at that tower. But I think, you know, it just, when I started doing this work 12 years ago, I started noticing towers that I'd never noticed ever before because I was looking for them. And I think you'd be shocked, even if you paid attention from, you know, here to even your drive home, and you were really looking around, what you would see that you don't typically otherwise notice. The point on the property values, you know, you're going to be able to find anything on the internet. That's the, you being the horror of the internet. But that's also been vetted and litigated in New York City. And there's been no determination that these sites bring down anybody's property value. In fact, what we find, similar to some of the comments we heard in writing from the gentleman tonight, is that in modern society, folks don't want to buy a house where there's no cell coverage because people don't have landlines, and they work from home, and they have teenagers, and they want to be able to have reliable cell service within their homes. So, if anything, we see the availability of cell coverage as a benefit to property value. So if anything, we see the availability of cell coverage as a benefit to property values, not a detriment. And again, we've never seen a study that's been supported under any case where they've said that yes, these home values have come down because there's a cell tower, you know, a mile and a half down the road. On the site selection analysis, we did what we feel is a very thorough look. Again, we have a coverage area that looks somewhat large, but when you boil it down to all of the topographic and other considerations where a site can actually be placed, where you're going to meet your coverage needs and you have a willing landlord, and if, you know, we can't, we don't have the power of condemnation where we can tell somebody, we found the perfect site and it's your backyard and this is where we're putting a tower, folks don't want to entertain a conversation with us. They don't have to and we need to move on to fulfill our coverage needs and that's what we do. So we think that we have fully vetted all of the available opportunities. We think this is a good site. We think that it's set back. We think that it's, you know, in an area that's most appropriate. The last point, just on the emissions, you know, possible emissions and concerns about wildlife and other, you know, and people and other issues with potential cell tower emissions, that's another issue that the federal government has determined is not appropriate for the municipalities to have to weigh and consider. I'm sure you've heard this before with all the cell tower work that you've done. But going back to the FCC question, this one is actually federally preempted where the FCC has said, if a telecommunications tower is acting within its license limits, which we are, we have to be, or we have an issue with the federal government, that that's not even something, the idea of potential, you know, of issues with emissions from the tower is not something that a local municipality is even allowed to consider. That's preempted and trumped by the federal government and the reason being because local municipalities are not in a position to weigh or to examine that type of analysis. So the federal government has done that for you and said, here are the appropriate emission levels that a cell tower may operate within to be safe to, you know, humans and flora and fauna and the environment generally. And we are going to be operating within those limits. We have to, we have no choice. So again, that's not an appropriate consideration for local municipality. I understand why folks might be concerned about that, but, you know, rest assured that that's something that is highly regulated by the United States government and something that this company has to, along with all other cell providers, adhere to and learn to continue operating.
I'm glad you got back to the point that I was making. Question that I have for you. Who goes up and tests this tower to make sure that the radiation levels are within the strict parameters?
It's really the ability of the equipment can only operate within certain parameters. And I figured I'll look a little bit more detail on that night. But it's mostly the ability of the equipment that only allows it to operate within those federally mandated parameters.
So I'll start with introducing myself. My name is Mike Crosby. Mike Crosby, class of 1990, Webster High. So I see a lot of familiar faces, so.
Mike's our hometown here.
Yeah, hometown. So grew up in Webster, moved away from Webster, moved back to Webster. So if that tells you anything what I think about Webster, it's, in fact, my claim to fame is that Boy Scouts, I put the welcome Webster word, life is worth living signs on, they live Bay Road, Five Mile, 250, you know, so I've been around here for quite a long time. I know those signs are looking pretty sad today, but they've been up for quite a long time, so. With that being said, I'll talk about a couple of things. So as far as the regulations are concerned, the OET, the FCC in 1996 created something called OET Vulcan 65B, which regulates the RF health and safety. So we're required to provide evidence that we have fulfilled, that in the sense that the site is safe to operate, in this case, where less than 1% of the maximum permissible exposure level. Once that's done, we're categorically excluded from further review. So that's what's being talked about, so is FCC providing that avenue forward to try to simplify things because this is something that, as long as I've been in this business, and I've been doing this for more than 26 years, that question's been around since I started. And in 96, when they came out with that bulletin, it helped to clarify this because they actually had formulas that could actually calculate what that national permissible exposure level would be. So we utilize third parties to calculate that. We calculated ourselves. As mentioned, the system is actually regulated so it should be put in the max power, so it can't go beyond that. So it's not something that's a typical concern once a site is served. As long as I'm up, I'll talk about two of the items that came up in the questions that I thought were of interest from an RF standpoint. The first is the site and location. Now, as mentioned, that Kuanas Club and existing Crown Tower that's located down near Van El sign, that's about one mile away from our existing Club Road sign. It's also about one mile away from the location that we're proposing, the Webster Park project. So it's situated halfway in between where we need to be and where we already have existing sites. And so if you think about the town of Webster like a room, think of it as a dark room with people reading all throughout town, they're trying to read a book. Each cell site is like a light that tries, provides coverage, provides light for you to be able to read a book. Right now, along Lake Road, we have a gap in service where there's no reading light. And so if we provide more reading light from a location where we already have reading light, it doesn't help us to fix that problem. So I'm just trying to draw a common analogy to try to shed some light on why the specific location is needed. And speaking of that, one of the things that we're trying to do over the years is, we've had it beaten into us, across hundreds of towns across New York State that I've worked with, we've had it beaten into us, that we need to provide the improved service with the minimal impact of the community possible. That's exactly what this site is. By having this site strategically located close to Lake Road, it allows us to minimize the height of the tower. If it was located elsewhere within that search range, the height of the tower might be significantly taller. It might require FAA marking and lighting, you know, so I think, you know, we need to take into consideration this is the minimum impact possible in order to solve the problem in this area. And that's due to the strategic position. And at 125 foot to the tower, that's a very modest tower. In fact, the last tower that I did in the town of Webster was back in the 90s. I've been all over New York State, Pennsylvania since then, but this is nice to be back in Webster. The last one I did was working with Lieutenant Jerry Colmeyer. We replaced the tower at the Town Hall. And I remember at that meeting, he mentioned to some people that had spoken out against that height, we're looking for a 120 at the time. And he said, you know, a lot of people don't even realize, you know, at, I guess it's Fun Road, Old Road, the church tower that's there was 170 feet tall. So the 120 that we were looking for at Town Hall was minimal compared to other towers that exist in town. The response was, people said they didn't even know there was a tower there. And so that's kind of the point here, is that this is a modest tower and once it's there, it's really, with those trees being 80, 90 feet tall, the majority of that tower is going to blend in the background.
I can see if the tower was closer to the road, it would be somewhat objectionable because it's all over there. Being located back there, in my thinking anyways, it's about as good as you can get. And I'm thinking, I did get a note from somebody, this is from a friend of Webster Trails.
Yes.
And that request, have you seen this? Anyways, but they got a good point. The site is located between and adjacent to our two premier open space properties, Whitey Road Nature Preserve and the Gosnell Big Woods Preserve. In mitigation of the tower impact on these natural areas, they are proposing that the owner grant to the town a conservation or a trail east that to connect the two pieces. So just, which is, I think is a good point. It was a good little negotiating thing there too.
And so...
That would have to be the owners of the property, obviously.
Right, yeah, and unfortunately, that's obviously not something that we can require, that the owner granted conservation easel that's giving up a real property right. I would also, you know, defer to your counsel on that, but that's, it's a bit unrelated to...
I understand. No, I just, I don't know if you've talked to the owners or, but I can, we'll deal with that as a separate issue.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the inquiry is fine, but yeah, in the context of a site plan approval to require the granting of a real estate interest is a little bit outside the scope. But I understand the point and also just why you brought up the park, the called Webster Park site for a reason, and that's that we're providing one of the primary coverage areas in addition to Lake Road, which is, you know, a significant target is that trail system within the park. I mean, I know that that's something that's important to a lot of folks.
The trails, the campground, you know, obviously Lake Road, Lake Road has a lot of options to dial because we all know, and twists and turns. And so in order to provide that coverage with that minimal impact, that strategic location allows us to do that without having to have a taller tower. So I think that we're lucky to have this large parcel available to us in this area at least, because I can assure you, everywhere that I go for work, this is not always the case. So from my perspective, this is, we're very lucky to have this large parcel available.
Other than there, I've been trying, I know the area pretty well. Been here about a while. I can't think of where you could put it without either going into town property, which would be Big Woods, which you need to put a road in there and try and get in there, you know, just across the street basically from the west. Or in the back is, it's all done, it drops right off at the end of that tower. I think you've got it as far back as you could possibly put it, to be within the fall distance, 100 foot. You're that close to the drop off, that goes down, I guess it's probably about 20 feet or something. Maybe drop off there back there, so you can't, you can't put it down there near a hole. So with that said, I guess, I don't see where we can do anything different at this point. Yes, sir, John?
Just a very quick comment that occurred to me. I think all of us live on Lake Road to look at the lake, not in Lake Road.
Thanks, John. All right, is there anyone else wishing to comment on this? If not, what we'll do is, again, there's no vote tonight. This is just a review I, you know, I've just shot in it too. So with that, thank you for cooperating with us on this whole thing.
Can I pose a question to the applicant?
Yeah, sure.
Question is, this gentleman who just spoke talked about health problems that he's passed and that he's had drops, sick of services, trying to call out. Has there been any studies done or anything to determine how many people would be affected if this tower went up? In other words, instead of going to what this gentleman is going to, that he wouldn't have to worry about drop services anymore?
I think it's less a calculation of number of people versus the, in area that we can show, right, on the propagation that, where the coverage would now be solid.
If that's been calculated, I don't have that information with me, but roughly you're talking about a little over a mile cell radius. Like you're looking at the east, west, and south coverages. And, you know, for the record, I did just pick this site up from another engineer who's since moved on to one of our planning positions. So that's the reason why I have been involved in this particular site since the beginning. I just became involved as this zoning group came up for us. So I don't know if that's been calculated before, but I would say you're certainly talking about hundreds of people. You know, and if you think about, you know, Verizon has roughly 50% of the market penetration in the area, you could say, you know, roughly five out of 10 people in the area are going to be immediately impacted with improved service. And speaking of health conditions, you know, one of the things we come across that's an increasing concern, especially for baby boomers and other elderly folks that are, no offense to any baby boomers, you know, I apologize, my parents are baby boomers. My mom's a baby boomer, you know. So, you know, one of the things that's becoming increasingly important for folks in that age group is e-medicine. There's a lot of medical services that are not provided, medicine, dosages, and different things that we're finding, and even like hospice type affairs that are done at home now, that areas like this would not be available. So it's actually something that we're hearing more and more from different types of medical communities and airports. We used to hear that, you know, obviously the ability to call 911, you know, that was your core need. You know, and obviously a lot of people have been disconnected, cut to core, don't have the landlines anymore. That's obviously very important still, but there's a lot of increasing applications, especially as the technology gets more capable.
So if the Blue's Department, for example, or the Fire Department, or EMT has came to you and said, we want to put an additional antenna on top of this tower, can you allow it?
Yes, that's part of the...
I don't speak for Blue Sky, a tower company, so I'll defer.
Yes, that's part of the co-location policy, which is, you write at Exhibit J. So just like we always seek to put antennas on an existing tower, if at all possible, to meet our coverage needs, we welcome, you know, being approached by other carriers and service providers if our tower meets their coverage needs rather than construction and towers alone for everyone that they're able to co-locate on an existing facility. So obviously, it has to, you know, the height has to make sense. There can't be interference issues, but generally as a policy, the company is open and permitting.
I believe, I think we have that in the code too, that the towers need a lot of co-location.
Yeah, and most towers that you see, you see, you know, a couple of sets of antennas and that's the reason that there are several providers generally.
When you mentioned on the theory, you were also talking about your competition as well.
That can happen sometimes too, yeah, depending on the tower, where there can be several competing carriers on the same level, depending on the scenario.
Mr. Peja, give me a second. Just to pause a couple of questions in the background.
Sure.
In your part again. I'm not so sure I agree with the, you'll learn to love it sentiment. I'm not persuaded by that, but a couple of questions for the Verizon folks. Were the specific site not to be allowed or permitted? My question is, what would their second and third alternate best locations be? If for some reason they just could not locate their, I'm curious as to what number two and three alternatives would be from their perspective. I also had a question, Mr. Crosby cited, said, well, we want to improve the coverage on the Webster Park trails. So I guess, would potentially not the converse be true that if the tower is sited in the Webster Park area, park proper, wide open areas there, easy access, presumably likewise it would provide coverage back the other way? If it can provide coverage forward, I presume it would provide coverage back. So just a couple of quick questions here.
Sure. Yes, and I'm happy to address those and Mike can give detail to these. But I'll answer your second point first, which is putting a tower right in the park. That is a non-starter. There's, it's very difficult, not impossible, to place cell towers within park property. The state of New York requires there to be an alienation of park property. You have to go through the New York State Legislature. It's deemed a grant of a property interest of protected land. So that's not really a viable option, just from a legal perspective, but from a coverage perspective, you know, the further you get from Lake Road, obviously, you're talking about having to find the perfect site and it's probably going to get taller the further it acts away. So for a lot of reasons, being within the park doesn't make sense. The point on what if this site doesn't work, there's no Plan B at this point because none of the other sites that were vetted are acceptable from either coverage perspective or, you know, being able to reach any sort of agreement. We are not able as a company to just, you know, construct something that's not be in our coverage objectives but sort of helping a little bit. We would have to come up with an alternative where it might be two towers, where there's one that's in a location that's not quite where we want to be and it's still leaving a significant coverage gap. And so now we have to build a second tower somewhere else where there's some duplicative coverage, but now we're able to meet our coverage objectives. And that's why it's so important when we're working through these sighting issues to try to be as close to possible in the center and in a desirable spot within that coverage gap, because the requirements on the company in order to maintain its FCC licenses and to be able to continue providing the necessary coverage to its customers, you don't just want to, you know, again, cover a portion of your gap and just leave the rest. You have to come up with a secondary solution for that second area. And that's where you come into a situation where you're having multiple towers to cover the same area, which we've had to do before. But if we can have one tower covering the primary area, that's obviously beneficial to all. Nina Phillips, 820 Lake Road. I've worked here for 26 years. I'm opposed to the project. I'm really sorry that people have medical issues.
I'm really sorry that people have medical issues and don't have coverage, but I do have a direct question for Verizon, and I'm wondering, is it an telecommunication company, what programs they have, what help they offer to these patients who don't have whatever access they need, other than slapping up a big cell tower? Do they have any coverage? Can they spend any of their money to help this patient?
Sure.
And two, why can't you pay in these little plans that would connect the parks? You have enough money.
All right, so I'll say on the first point, I'm not sure, other than providing the coverage, what could, I guess, address the issue of someone with a medical condition who has an inability to make phone calls. Also, the site is, these sites run, you know, anywhere from a million dollars on, so like I said, the company has no interest in throwing their money into infrastructure. If they could run their network without constructing one more antenna, or one more site, or installing one more cable, of course, they would do it, why not? It's all upside. So the fact that they are investing in this very expensive infrastructure to cover this very specific radius is, means that they're doing their job and what they can in order to benefit the local residents and, you know, folks that are coming through the area. So that's the whole point of the site, is to provide that benefit. It's not for Verizon's benefit, it's for the benefit of the customers. On the second point, again, it's not appropriate in the context of a site plan to require a landowner to give up a property right without consideration. So if the property owner, and we can certainly raise that as a question that was asked, and if they're willing to entertain that, okay, but from a legal perspective, that's completely separate and apart from this application.
Yeah, I understand. Well, that's, that's, yeah. That's something, though, that I think we could work toward, try, see, I thought that was a good idea, Mr. Harris.
And I'm not sure we have that correspondence, but if you could make sure that that gets to the team, so we could look at it more carefully and pass it over to you.
Yeah, I have, I have a copy of it.
Great.
Lori Anderson, based on Lake Road. One more question I would like to be clarified, is whether or not construction has already started on the site. When we took a board meeting, there was, there is a road built, and there is a substantial amount of film and earth movement going on that appears to be the cell site. So I would like to have some clarification on whether the work has actually started on this. The other clarification I would like.
I believe, I know where you're talking, but I believe Josh and the town engineer did go out there, that's not supposed to have been happening, they had it, it's nothing to do with the cell tower.
No, we're not doing any of that, so.
No.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, and referring to the fact that other cell companies, and possibly the fire company, and any other community service type organization may be able to access this particular tower for their benefit and what their needs might be. My question is, if this is granted, and this is part of what is planned, then what the citizens might find acceptable at this point with the cell tower or not, then are they, we going to be faced with this ever-evolving tower? If, for instance, should another company, another organization agree to, or get an agreement that they can access the use of this tower, then add another 20 feet, 30 feet, more lights, more additions? So put this tower evolved from the tower that we're talking about tonight to a much larger, much more substantial, much more visible tower than what we're talking about this evening?
Yeah, and that's a great question, and sorry if I wasn't clear on that. The fact that we would, from a legal or a real estate perspective, you know, welcome the opportunity to consider co-locations on the tower does not take away the jurisdiction of the town, which would have the authority to review any changes. So any, even a, you know, one inch increase to the height over what was proposed, even the addition of any significant set of additional antennas, those applications all come before the town board and the planning board with the same exact process as this tower. You know, generally, if the alternative is a brand-new tower or adding antennas to an existing tower, that's typically going to be desirable, but just because the tower is there, it's not going to give us any sort of cart launch to modify it and change it in any way we want. We'll have the specific plan that's been proposed, is what will be approved, that will be the, that will be the basis of our building permit, and from that point on, there cannot be any modifications or additions without coming back through the same entire process, which will require public involvement and a public hearing, etc.
Okay, I guess, is that it?
What, Mr., I mean to say, I guess for the folks who had a concern about coverage, cellphone coverage, is landline service no longer offered in Webster? Is that not an option for folks who claim they don't have good coverage? If I understand, is landline coverage still is available in Webster? Is that true?
I believe so, there's still landline coverage, isn't there?
As far as I know, but in America, people have choices, people want their cell phones, so we are.
Choices, landlines a choice for folks?
Well, yeah, but, but way in that, yeah. Well, you'd have to go to the mic, dude.
I'm sorry.
My thought on it is, why would I want, if I'm paying for a cellphone, and I use it for business, for this, for that, and everything else, why would I have to want to have to pay for a landline in my house just because I don't have coverage in my little pocket? If you live there. Well, that's my question is, let me ask you, would I want, would you want to do that, I don't think you want to do that.
Tony, I think, I believe that there are some companies that offer both cellphone and landline. I think the last one was one, maybe, or excuse me, I'm dating myself. Frontier is another one.
Yeah, if you want a cellphone, you have a cellphone. If you want landline, you have a landline. If you want both, you get both. But because I don't have coverage in that area of Lake Road, doesn't, I don't want to be forced to have to pay for a landline to cover myself at home.
Right, there's stuff that are completely separate, too. It's like Verizon, the phone company, that does landline work, which is different than Verizon Wireless, and just because you may have a, you know, Verizon landline that provides you a landline, doesn't mean that you're somehow going to be able to get cell coverage without the appropriate communications.
I just see these ads on TV for stretch, you know, and they're going on every five minutes the whole day, where they offer something like that.
Yeah, I think that's all, that's all presuming that the coverage is there, right? Like you can buy Verizon phones and planes as well, but if the coverage isn't available.
Verizon is the, Verizon is the incumbent landline provider in certain areas across the state as well, so we're one of those companies that, kind of licensed area, we have both sides of the house, but that doesn't preclude users from, you know, wanting to use their cell phones regardless of whether it's inside the home or outside the home, but we're talking about an entire geographic area, and landline service to pinpoint locations doesn't resolve that issue. So just to be clear, we're talking about a much larger area, just specific calls, a much larger service area.
Okay, anybody, Derek, any questions? I mean, it's pretty much covered, I mean, we have at this point. Derek, Dave, all set? All set? All right, I guess, pretty much covers it. There's no vote tonight for any of this.
Okay, great.
This is strictly an informational meeting, so the next one is preliminary, you know, preliminary, very good.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity. If anything specific comes up between now and then, please let us know, and we'll be prepared to address, but otherwise, the report seems.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, just thank you.